Okay, hold on. Bringing up the audio, going live. We are live. Good evening. Thank you for coming to Algonquin Regional High School tonight. It is Wednesday, December 7th. It is 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call the Northborough School Committee into session. First on our agenda is audience sharing. Do we have anything? All righty. Moving on to new business, we have principal report by Dr. Colby.
Good evening, everyone. Balloons over Broadway. Fourth and second grade students worked together at LSS Tradition, well, NLS Annual Tradition. Balloons over Broadway, based on a book by Melissa Stewart that chronicles the life of Tony Sarg, the creator of the Macy's Day Parade. Beyond the obvious joy and excitement of creating floats to be transported on Dash robots, the collaboration touched on many second and fourth grade learning standards, including mapping, digital literacy, coding, and the positive impacts of immigration on our culture and our country. They also participated in a turkey trot. It's again, a yearly tradition. On November 18th, the entire school ran for 20 minutes. This year, the PTO raised funds through a program called Get Moving Fundraising Company. Over the course of the month, the students had fun learning about their fitness through running and dancing. At Proctor, Mrs. Seer would like to highlight that all schools welcomed caregivers for parent-teacher conferences in early November. Educators appreciated the time connecting with families to share progress and set goals. We want to extend a thank you to our district translators, who worked across all four elementary schools to support our EL families. In November, all fourth and fifth graders across the district shared their band chorus and recorder knowledge and learning as part of their annual informants. The students demonstrated and modeled specific skills and solicited audience participation from families. We are all so proud of what they have accomplished and look forward to their January concert. Like Lincoln Street, grade two students also read Balloons over Broadway and created original balloon creations. Proctor students and families enjoyed a parade led by our second graders around the school. The third graders also created Macy Day-inspired floats that showcased their knowledge of Massachusetts state symbols. In December, the Proctor School will be running a collection, Socket to Homelessness, by collecting new socks for Rowland House. Socks are the most needed and requested items for those that are experiencing homelessness. We are all hoping to collect a large amount of socks to donate. Lastly, the Proctor third graders will be spreading cheer by caroling at the Northborough Senior Center on December 20th. At the Z School, they held their first turkey trot on November 22nd and raised $11,000 for their PTO. This money is being used to pay for field trips and other enrichment programs from the school. On November 1st, the second graders at Z went on a field trip to Broad Meadow Brook, where they learned about the different plants and creatures in each biome. On November 18th, the third and fourth graders went to the Plymouth Pawtucket Museum and learned what life was like for the early settlers of Massachusetts and the Wampanoag. The Action Discovery Museum has also been coming to Z to share some amazing enrichment science experiences. Fifth graders learned about green engineering. Kindergarteners and first graders learned about color and light. And the fourth graders learned about sound waves. They will be coming to work with second graders on changes in matter and third graders on force and magnetism in the coming months. The Peaslee second graders participated in the Act and Discovery Museum enrichment program, and their topic was physical changes of matter. We had several of the other grades attending sessions in January. The students loved the hands-on experiments and highly skilled presenters. Teachers join these sessions and are able to connect the information back to their science lessons while working on those topics in the classroom. At Peaslee, our classroom buddy program is underway. Monthly classes pair up with younger grades to work on projects. Our fifth graders from Mrs. Donay's class joined together with Mrs. Brooks kindergarten students to learn about Veterans Day and to write letters together to veterans and active military, as well as families of the fallen. The organization assisted with this great project is affiliated with Mass General Hospital and the Boston Red Sox. Peaslee turns 60 this year. We will be kicking off the year-long celebration later in December with a birthday party. Some of the activities will include digging up and exploring the time capsule buried in 1992. Students will guess the items in the capsule and make suggestions about what to put in the capsule when it gets buried again in the spring. We have already collected pictures and artifacts to display from the past. We will be reaching out to former students and teachers to invite them to share about their experiences while they were students or teachers at Peaslee. So anyone listening that has any contributions, please reach out. At Melican, December is a very busy month. Trimester one concluded on December 2nd, and report cards will be available to families on December 9th via Power School. Our interscholastic basketball teams are practicing and preparing for an exciting season. We had our seventh and eighth grade winter band and chorus concert last night, and our sixth grade concert takes place tomorrow. Thank you to Algonquin for the use of the auditorium. On December 21st, we will hold our annual Evening of Song at Melican. Auditions for our school musical Matilda Junior takes place later this month as well. Our seventh graders travel to the Hanover Theater to view A Christmas Carol later this month as well. This annual tradition corresponds with the ELA unit that focuses on comparing and contrasting a written drama to its filmed and staged versions. Our annual holiday helper program is in full swing. Students and staff are invited to participate in a raffle during lunches, where they win prizes including overstuffed stuffed animals, Melican gear, and gift certificates. All proceeds go directly to the Northborough Helping Hands to support Northborough families this holiday season. And that concludes the principal report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Colby. I loved hearing about field trips. I love hearing about the buddy program. I love hearing about all the stuff that is now coming back to the schools that we haven't had for a few years. So it's really exciting to hear all about that. And that productions are happening at Melican and band things, so it's all very exciting. I want to thank the other principals for contributing also to the reports, because I know it's time-consuming and it's great.
And it's a collaboration.
It is a huge collaboration, and I appreciate you coming and presenting that collaboration tonight for us. I'll turn it over to the committee and see if there's any specific questions that you have.
I just actually have a comment.
Yep.
I just think it's really great to hear all of the fundraisers and giving back to the community that students are doing throughout all of the schools. I think that instilling sort of those values is really important. So, thank you to all the principals for leading those efforts.
I'd just like to say that I'm a proud Peaslee parent from back in the 1990s. And I was just doing a quick, my daughter's age, and she was in the school at the time when that capsule was from 1992.
Yes.
So it'd be interesting to what's in there. But I'm just very proud of how this district has grown in the time, because at the time then, I was a library volunteer, because it was by parents.
Right.
And now we have librarians in the school. The nurses were shared among the schools. Didn't have it. So, and there were a lot of parents that volunteered and even got, somebody got a card catalog, which we used to use back in 1992. And it was the whole box that she got, you know, for Peaslee. And it was just, wow, we have our own card catalog. So there, and it's thanks to the taxpayers and the parents, and especially from the children's fairs and everything. And that's in all the schools. This isn't just one. But I would just like to say that I'm a proud Peaslee parent, alumni. But thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything? Thank you so much. I appreciate your presentation. And I am comfortable with saying goodnight for you. Unless you're welcome to stay, as always, but...
Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Moving on to next to an item Legislative Update.
So just a quick update. We did at the last meeting talk about sending State Representative Kilcoyne communication around the impact that a 14% increase would have on our out-of-district cost increases. So we did send a letter that was co-signed by Chairperson Gannett and myself. And we did hear a response, and that is something that the state delegation and the legislative delegation in our communities will be advocating on our behalf for. So as the state budget process moves forward and I hear more information, I will communicate that to the committees.
Joan?
A question on that. It's a 14% increase in the tuition. What about the transportation? I thought I read something in a community advocate from another district that was saying that the transportation was also going to be increasing.
So we do have a contract through Asa Valley Collaborative for special education transportation that was renegotiated this past spring. That was a 4% increase on transportation costs. So we do not anticipate, it's a multi-year contract. We anticipate a 4% increase.
That's not related to the...
Not connected.
Okay.
Two different things.
Okay. But I'm glad to see that, you know, you have that. That's three-year and it's only a 4%. So thank you for the clarification.
All right. Thank you so much. Moving on the agenda, we have approval of grants and donations. We have a donation from...
Capobianco.
Capobianco Law to the Northborough Public School Free Lunch Program in the amount of $2,000.
So it just seems like every meeting, there is some type of donation from Capobianco Law. We're very thankful to their generosity, and we will be issuing a thank you on behalf of the school committee and the district for their contribution, you know, their continued...
Their continued support and appreciation to our district. Joan?
I make a motion that we approve with much gratitude the donation from Capobianco Law to the Northborough Public Schools Free Lunch Program in the amount of $2,000, and that the superintendent and the chair send a letter expressing our gratitude.
Second, a motion by Joan, seconded by Lauren. Any discussion?
I just had a question.
Yep.
Just didn't know, like, so is there an earmark for a piece of equipment? Or small wares? I mean, 2,000...
Yeah, I would communicate that because of the current free lunches to our students, we are investigating, making some investments in our capital infrastructure in our cafeterias.
Okay.
And this will be part of those larger capital infrastructure changes, whether it's new refrigerators or stoves or utensils, pots and pans.
Pots and pans would be great.
Any other discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you so much for your donation and continued support of our district. Moving on, there is no old business at this time. We're the superintendent's report to the committee, and we're starting with enrollments.
Sure. So in your packet is the enrollment report as of 11/15/2022. The current enrollment as of November 15th was 1604. So we have three students more than the October enrollment report. So the trend is that we continue to welcome new members to our community and our schools. And it is something we are monitoring very closely in terms of class size policy currently, but also as we're making our projections for FY '24, making sure that our class sizes are at a rate or size that support high-quality instruction for students. And be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on enrollment? Nope, seeing none. Continue, please. Thank you.
So also in your packet is the FY '23 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, and I will turn it over to Becky Pelgrino.
Yes, so in November, we did make the difficult decision to freeze the Northborough FY '23 budget. As you can see, as of November 30th, we had $208,554 remaining on the budget line, or 0.78%. And I do want to remind the committee that we really have encumbered all of our anticipated funds. So salaries, known costs, those are already included in that figure. You may recall that last year at this time, we had frozen the budget as well. Last year, we did have $655,936 or 2.5 for remaining on the budget. As we've explained, the main budget drivers this year are teacher salaries, electricity, and then the special education transportation. We are meeting on a weekly basis to review and to monitor the budget. And so, you know, we do, while we are, you know, kind of treading lightly with the budget, we are optimistic, you know, that we are going to be able to make it through the year, and we have contingency plans already in place. I will say, on a positive note, in November, we did receive our circuit breaker figures for FY '23. So for special education tuition, we received just over 1.1 million. And for transportation, we did receive $110,516. And we have until June 30th of 2024 to fully expend these funds.
Joan?
Clarification. So the current FY '23 budget, when was that frozen?
It was in November. I can get you the exact date. I believe it was at the beginning of the month.
I'll just make a comment too, that the communications to principals and directors is that if you need something, it's a conversation. If there's something that is important to move forward with, it's a conversation with, you know, Dr. Reinhardt and myself and Mrs. Pelgrino. And typically, if it's that important, we purchase it. It's just that we're trying to be judicious right now around the bottom line and where we are, so that when it is March, April, and May, and we do need an item, we have money to purchase it.
Follow-up onto that is, and I think, thank you for the clarification, is when you, we freeze the budget that early in November, and we have supplies that are needed, or something very expensive, which is toner for the copiers. So we are still able to do this through the principal's request to do this. So nobody is at a deficit right now in the classroom.
Correct. And what we've done is that we've worked with each of the schools to say, what do you need for paper? We've had them actually purchase their paper for the remainder of the year, or their anticipated paper, in terms of like any other supplies. Most of that purchasing does actually happen at the beginning of the year. And there may be one-off things throughout the year, but if there is something that someone needs, we'll have that conversation. And the good thing is, is that the toner for the copiers is included in our lease. So that money is already captured in this figure. So I think we've really tried to put some good systems in place. So I do feel confident that people will have what they need. And again, just being cautious.
Well, thank you for being so cautious and being proactive to this instead of just not freezing the budget and then coming to hard times maybe in the second half of the year. So thank you very much.
And I'll just make a comment that the challenging budget climate that we're in currently is not because of lack of forecasting. You know, we did forecast an increase in electricity. However, we did not anticipate the significant increase that we had. So I think all the town of Northborough has been impacted by this electricity rate in our schools. The increase in enrollment is something that we would love to, I'd love to have a crystal ball, be able to predict enrollment. It's something that, over the summer, we had a significant number of students move into our community, which is exciting, which resulted in about $100,000 of staffing expenditures that we weren't anticipating. And then, thirdly, as Becky mentioned, about a $200,000 increase in special education transportation, again, was unanticipated. So I think that for those reasons, we are finding ourselves to be in a very lean budget season at this point in time.
I will entertain a motion for the approval of the budget. Joan?
I make a motion that we accept until audited the Northborough Public School District FY '23 Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of November 30th, 2022.
Second?
Motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously? Thank you so much. Moving on to the grants.
So provided in your packet is an accounting of the grant that the Northborough Public Schools has received so far in fiscal year '23. The federal entitlement grants that are listed on this report are titles I, II, III, IV, as well as the IDEA Special Education and the Early Childhood Special Education Programs Grants. These six grants total $650,747 and are very beneficial to our district and to the programs that they help to support. And I would ask at this time for the committee to vote to accept these grants.
Thank you so much. I'll entertain a motion to accept... Should I read them all individually?
I think it's probably important to read all of them.
To read all of them? Okay. I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the grants, the federal grant from fiscal year '23, Title II, Building System of Support for Excellent Teaching and Learning, for the amount of $24,670. For the federal grant, fiscal year '22, Title III, English Language Acquisition and Academic Achievement Program for English Learners and Youth Immigrant Children and Youth, for the amount of $12,238. For the federal grant, fiscal year '23, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, Federal Special Education Entitlement Grant, for the amount of $517,712. Federal grant, fiscal year '23, Early Childhood Special Education, ECSE Program Entitlement Grant, for the amount of $21,577. For the federal grant, fiscal year '23, Title I, Improving Basic Programs, for the amount of $64,550. And for the federal grant, fiscal year '23, Title IV, Student Support and Academic Enrichment, for the amount of $10,000, for a total of $650,747. Do you have a motion for it?
Oh.
So moved?
So moved.
So moved by Erin?
I think there was one typo, correct?
Yes.
So that, that second grant, just say FY '23, is that correct?
Okay.
Sorry. I think maybe Erin just needs to say so moved with that.
So moved.
With the clarification of fiscal year '23.
Title III. I'll second.
And seconded by Lauren. So motion by Erin, seconded by Lauren. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimously passes. Thank you, federal loans and grants. Appreciate you. We'll be sure to send you a letter of our gratitude.
They will be checking in on us with many, many auditing.
They have plenty of touches.
We are presents that come with strings.
All right. Moving on to our agenda, we've got capital projects and improvements.
So in your packet is the Northborough Public Schools FY '24 through FY '29 Facilities Capital Plan that was voted on 11/1/2022.
Did we change, there was something that we were going to change in that. I think we had a more accurate estimate, I believe, from the one we discussed last month.
I thought the Proctor went up.
I feel like it was, we had, it was an older... It was an older estimate, and Keith said we had a new, more accurate estimate. So it was...
I can review the minutes in the video from the last meeting and just make sure that has been...
Edited and... Yes, Joan?
Greg, maybe Kelly would know. Which of these would be potential warrant articles?
So I think the conversation that I've had with Town Administrator Kader is the top priority, is the Proctor roof, as you well know. We did submit a statement of interest into the accelerated repair program, and we learned that we were not invited in as a result. I've continued to have conversations with Town Administrator Kader about how to fund this. I believe the select board is having conversations on ARPA funds, potentially. This is part of the conversation that's taking place around, is this something that would be considered through ARPA funding or a town warrant article? That has not been decided yet by the town. But I'll be working with John Kader, Becky, preparing warrant article language just in preparation for the different pathways that you might take.
Because that will be coming up soon, would and I. Okay, thank you.
So also in your packet is the discussion and approval of the FY '24 budget goals. And I did add the recommended changes, which are highlighted in blue, for the committee's review and hopefully approval.
Joan? I make a motion that we approve the budget goals for FY '24 for the Northborough Public Schools K through 8, as written, as our budget priorities, our goals and budget priorities. Do I have to read them all? No, thank you.
Motioned by Joan?
Second.
Seconded by Erin. Any discussion? I would just like to say that this was a truly collaborative effort on all of us this year to kind of like really go at it, you know, and do it. So I'm proud of us as a committee for the work that we did, and I'm proud of the administration for the assistance and guidance to us. So I hope that this will be a great year and that we can get some good things. Seeing no other discussion, we will take a vote. All in favor? Unanimously passes. Thank you so much. Moving on to the budget calendar. It is in our packet.
So we just highlight one date on the budget calendar, and that is, I believe, the financial trend monitoring session is scheduled for December 15th, next Thursday. Date, time, and location has not been communicated yet, but mark your calendars.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's going to be virtual.
Okay.
That would be my assumption. I don't know, I think last year's it was, so I don't know if they're going to continue it, or if they're going to go back in person or not.
Yeah, and John's been excellent communicating the dates and time. So I would expect an email from him, our communication, any in the next day or two. And I will make sure the committee has that information.
Yeah. I unfortunately will not be available to attend that. I could possibly come late. There is an event at my children's school, and I'm kind of chairing it, so I kind of have to be...
Can't be two places.
Can't be two places at the same time. Does anybody else have any conflicts or anything that...
I don't have any conflict. I just would think that this is very important for the regional members also from the Northborough. So I would appreciate, because I know that at the select meetings meeting on Monday, they mentioned about, John had mentioned, and the chairperson had mentioned about, you know, the ones that get the invites to at the school committee. But I think it's important that the regional members from Northborough also are aware of this, and even Southborough, because they could attend also.
I will make sure that is, they are invited.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we have the preliminary budget presentation.
Yes, so just give me one minute to share my screen.
Minute's up, let's go.
We have 15 seconds left. So, again, so this evening, I'll be presenting to the committee and the community the FY '24 preliminary budget. And just a couple comments before I begin. The budget is, development is a process, and we are early in the process. And a lot of information changes over the period of coming from a preliminary budget to a recommended and ultimately a voted budget. And I think it's always important to put that into context. This is a budget that was developed with the best-known information that we have at this point in time. And I anticipate this will change over the next several weeks and months. So in terms of our budget process, we are a mission and vision-driven organization. Our mission is quite simple, but complicated. It's educate, inspire, and challenge all students, and I'll emphasize "all." And our vision is around making sure that our students leave our education... Um, and our vision is around, uh, making sure that our students leave our educational system uh, with the skills to be excellent collaborators, critical and creative thinkers, communicators, citizens who are socially and civically engaged, growth-oriented and healthy and balanced. As I mentioned, um, the budget, um, development is a process, it begins early in September and runs throughout, um, the calendar year leading up to the town meeting. Um, so it's hard to believe that we are in December. Um, and in December, some key milestone events, um, take place, one being the presentation of the preliminary budget. And the second event is the financial trend monitoring meeting with the joint boards and committees. Um, in January, our goal is to present a superintendent's recommended budget to the school committee. Um, and then in February, I vote, I have a voted school committee budget and then, uh, meeting with appropriations and, um, holding a hearing in preparation for the annual Northborough Town Meeting. In terms of the fiscal year twenty-four budget, what are some of the budget variables that we're contending with at this point in time? We are in a collective bargaining, um, year, so we are in negotiations. So COLA is an unknown at this point in time, so that is something that, um, is a variable. Also, what will happen with the fourteen percent increase of out-of-district special education, um, funding? So again, our advocacy at the legislative level is very important because a fourteen percent increase significantly impacts our overall, uh, budget. Out-of-district special education transportation is another budget variable. Um, Marie Allen and her team and Becky and the finance team are working closely on trying to project what that, the costs will be, um, but it's oftentimes difficult to project. Increased energy costs, something that is a variable, um, cost of supplies and materials, so we know that inflation has an impact on how far a dollar, um, goes. We are experiencing that in the current economic climate and we anticipate that we will experience that moving forward in FY twenty-four. And similar to materials, the costs of services are also increasing. That our, uh, service providers are also seeing increased costs and that is being passed on to us as an organization. In terms of how we look at, um, a budget, the different types of budgets, so there are two types of budgets, level funded budget and level services budget. And I think it's important for us to have a conversation and be clear about, um, the different aspects of each. A level funded budget is basically providing the same funding amount as the prior fiscal year, which would mean that we'd have to most likely cut services to get to that budget, uh, level funded amount. Um, it's just looking at services cuts needed to cover salary costs, um, contractual obligations. There'd be no new, uh, positions, programs, um, and most, it would have a detrimental impact on our overall program if we had a level funded budget. A level services budget is the same services that were provided in the prior fiscal year continued into upcoming fiscal year. Um, funding for the budget would incre- increase in order to cover salary and cost increases. However, we would have no new positions, programs or services. And I think it's important as we move into the budget process, typically we, um, we move forward with a level services budget with incremental growth areas in certain, um, programs and line items. In terms of our fiscal year twenty-twenty-four approved budget goals, so I made an assumption that we would approve our budget goal, or the school committee would approve the budget goals this evening. Um, but I think it's important to, for the community to know that, um, the budget really is centered around what goals are we trying to accomplish. The goal, those goals come from our strategic plan, but also the priorities the school committee adopts. So this year it's, uh, recruit, maintain and support high-quality staff. Bless you. Meet the needs of all learners with instructional, uh, classroom models that are research-based, reflective of practice, um, and support student and teacher ratios in accordance with the class size policy. And I will not read through all these goals, but I think what's important, uh, for the community to know is that when we make difficult decisions or decisions to add programming, they're, they're guided by these budget priorities, um, and budget goals that we've set. So in terms of an overview of FY twenty-four budget process, so the budget process began in September with principals working with their faculty and staff and directors working with our teams on looking at what, um, types of programming and funding they would need to support, um, the FY twenty-four budget. So all of those budgets were, um, provided to the finance team on October thirty-first. Um, and then the finance team took all of that data and created a FY twenty-four, um, initial budget with all the requests. So that initial, um, budget, um, was thirty million, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars, um, or a fifteen point one-two percent over fiscal year twenty-three. We did apply circuit breaker, so a million ninety-five, four eighty-seven to, um, the fist, for that initial budget. And we, um, landed on a preliminary budget of twenty-nine million, six hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars, or eleven point zero-one percent, um, increase over fiscal year twenty-three. So in terms of where we were at this point last year in the same, um, part of the process, so, um, last year at this point in time, our, uh, initial budget pre, uh, applying circuit breaker was eleven point seven-three percent. Um, as you can see, we received a lot more money in terms of circuit breaker. Um, and applying circuit break, circuit breaker, we were able to, with a preliminary budget, this same presentation, uh, present a four point four-zero percent budget. So as you can see, this is a very different type of economic climate that we're in and a very different position that we've been in for many years in terms of the preliminary budget at this point in time. I think it's also important to talk about, you know, what is a one percent increase on the, um, on the budget? So, um, a one pers- percent increase on the FY twenty-three appropriated budget is, uh, two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Um, to get to a one percent increase with the current preliminary budget, we'd have to reduce two million, six hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars. Um, so as you can see, um, there's a lot of work to do in terms of, um, looking at potential reductions to the budget to get to a budget that the town and community can afford. A five percent increase, uh, would require the district at this point in time to reduce the preliminary budget by a million, six hundred five thousand, seventy-six dollars.
Luke, if I was clarifying for the community that we're, the preliminary budget is a level services.
The preliminary, the preliminary.
Or the preliminary budget includes the budget goals as set out by the, FY twenty-four budget goals as set up by the committee?
The preliminary budget is a level services budget with no new positions.
Okay.
Um, and we have added a slide around what new positions would be, needed to be added in order to meet the budget goals and what the financial impact is.
Just for clarity, so we know where we're working. Thank you.
There, I would share that the preliminary budget is a, is a level services budget in terms of staffing. There are some incremental, uh, growth areas in terms of curriculum supplies. So in terms of the current budget drivers, um, so there are, uh, five budget drivers that we're seeing. The first is salary increases in COLAs. So, um, again, being in a negotiation year, um, part of the eleven percent increase includes COLA, so that's a little over, uh, one point one million dollars. Um, we are seeing a significant increase in out-of-district collaborative tuitions as a result of the fourteen percent increase in, um, needing to meet the needs of some of our students. Um, so these are out-of-district placements, so that is increasing by a little over a million dollars. Uh, we're seeing a cost of special education transportation increase by a little under four hundred thousand dollars. The cost of electricity and heating is a hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. And then substitutes, teachers and nurses, we're seeing, uh, an increase of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. So of the two point nine million dollar increase to get to eleven million or eleven percent budget increase, um, all the, uh, um, increases, these budget drivers equal two point seven million dollars. All the other line items incre- uh, include costs increase, that total a hundred and forty thousand dollars. For many of these, these are fixed costs. Um, these aren't costs we're adding to the budget because, um, we're adding positions or we're adding materials, they are cost escalations and ke- and key budget driver areas that we're seeing, um, that are very hard for us to control. If a student needs an out-of-district placement, um, we don't get to determine whether the student should be helped placed or not, that is a team process and if the team decides, then we have a fiscal obligation. We don't, um, get to choose whether we transport special education students to special education programming, that is a fixed cost. My point is that with these cost increases, there's not a lot of room for flexibility, um, in terms of reducing these, these cost drivers.
Nearly ten percent.
So the, the COLA at the top, how are you projecting that number? I know we haven't, you know.
Yeah, so this is, um, so this has some assumptions built into the budget.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, potentially there are savings there, but it's not something we've, we've sat yet at this point.
Okay, so that, that number is or may fluctuate.
The line items that were really.
Too, always though, too, depending on how negotiations go.
Right.
So I would say that we are working very closely with the student support services team and the finance team on looking the out-of-district collaboratives and tuitions. Um, I think the advocacy around the OSD fourteen percent increase is essential. I think we are looking at how we can make transportation for special education more efficient and find some cost savings. Electricity, we really don't, I mean, we can try conservation efforts, but I don't think that's going to be significant in savings. And we do have some area to look at in terms of teacher, substitutes, teachers and nurses and trying to be more efficient with that. Um, um, so there are some areas we can, we're, we're going to try to find some savings, but, um, this is a very different position that we've been in than in prior years.
Joan. May I ask a question? On the out-of-district and collaborative tuitions, that is for students that we, that are currently in that and that we have identified, that isn't for any other new students that may require more services, nor is it for any move-ins that may come into our, cause we can't, we can't estimate, we just can't add that, we have to have exact numbers, so those are the students we have right now.
So I would, I would say that that is true. Um, this does not account for any unanticipated, um, out-of-district placement. However, Marie and her team, um, have students that they are, in cases that they are watching very closely. We, we are, um, looking at some of those cases and projecting some of those in, in this number. Um, and that is some of the work we're doing behind the scenes. If, um, it's decided that an out-of-district placement isn't the least restrictive environment for a student, the student would remain in a district and that could be a cost savings. But this number is what we're anticipating based on the information that we know currently. Is that accurate, Marie?
And that fourteen, oh, through the chair, that fourteen percent increase, what I have read is, I didn't know if that was just for our, where we send students, but in finding, reading, doing it, um, reading, is that, that that fourteen percent increase was by the Operational Services Division that the State's Executive Office for Administration and Finance authorized a fourteen percent increase in special education, private schools tuition for the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. So that's all the districts across Massachusetts, Massachusetts?
Yeah.
So that's nothing that we can say, oh, let's cut this and go ten percent, we can't. We've been, they've authorized it, we have to pay the, the fourteen percent increase.
Unless the advocacy works.
And that's, and I would, I would argue their position was they are seeing, um, escalation costs due to inflation.
Yeah.
And they're having a hard time retaining their staffing and recruiting staffing. So we are challenged with the exact same climate that the, these private schools are, are facing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's, it's, we really don't have a lot of, um, control other av- other than advocating, um, in our legislative delegation.
So this is something that's mandated, that we don't have a choice, we just do it. Okay, thank you.
So in terms of some of our budget offsets that we've applied, so, um, we get circuit breaker reimbursement, so that is, um, a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, we are seeing some FY twenty-three circuit, FY twenty-three circuit breaker, um, special transportation reimbursement um, as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, however, it is by no means, um, significant in terms of our transportation costs. And one area that is unique this year is, um, typically at this point in time, we, we will have learned of a number of retirements. And as a result, there are budget savings that we can apply to the budget uh, because of the differential between a person who is on, uh, the high end of the salary and what we would be replacing that position. There aren't, um, very many.
Nobody wants to leave.
So it is early, January fifteenth is, is the timeline. Um, there, there have been communications in prior years where we've learned of retirement at, you know, close to that deadline. Um, we are hopeful that, um, those who are wishing to retire will communicate sooner so we can factor that into our overall budget picture. But those budget offsets at this point in time total a little under one point one million dollars. So where, uh, where are we today, uh, December seventh, early on in the process, without all of the information that we'll need to discover as we move through this process? Um, this evening, the preliminary budget is twenty-nine million, six hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars, um, which is a budget increase, dollar amount of two million, nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars, or eleven point zero-one percent budget increase over fiscal year twenty-three. The principals, directors and central office leadership team and I, um, will be engaging in a number of budget conversations and exercises over the next several weeks and months, um, to be able to present to the school committee a recommended budget in January. We are optimistic that our landscape and our numbers will become more clear and we will, um, be able to reduce that eleven percent, uh, budget increase to a more manageable, uh, increase.
Let's make a clarifying point. I think, I think what Bryce was talking about earlier is finally like settling in. So this eleven percent, it's not even talking about our budget goals yet.
Yeah.
Okay, wow, okay.
Correct.
That's why, that's why I wanted to, I wanted to solve it.
So what is not included, what is not included in this, this level services budget in terms of staffing are, um, the FY twenty-four staffing requests that were made by principals and directors. Um, so, um, I will read through these because I think it is important for the community to hear what is not included in our budget. So the first is that, um, it's been a budget priority of the school committee, uh, and the district to add a strings program to Northborough Elementary. Um, this has been a, a budget priority for, um, two or three years. Um, this, um, in order to make this a reality and achieve this priority, um, we would need to add a point eight, um, elementary strings teacher, um, to our music staff and that is a cost of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars. Um, we've talked a lot about our reading model, where we have reading, um, teachers in all four of our elementary schools and our middle school. Um, we want to add a math teacher, um, to replicate some of the work we're doing around literacy. Um, we are also, um, we also would like to add. We are also, we also would like to add math interventionists. So part of the work that our reading teachers do is provide intervention to students who might need a six week intervention to get up to speed. And we would like to have a parallel model in mathematics. Reading tutors, so we would like to add reading tutors to work alongside with our reading teachers so that they can provide direct instruction, that tutoring to our students. Human resource generalist said this was a request made last year. So this is a shared position, a forty, thirty, thirty cost share with the region in Southborough. And we are an organization with over eight hundred employees. There is a tremendous amount of paperwork and legal requirements and support our employees need. And this would add a, another additional human resource generalist to the central office staff to be able to support the folks that we work alongside with. Another goal is to make sure that we maintain our school grounds and our buildings at a high level, that they're visually appealing and welcoming in terms of landscape and grounds. This, a request was made to add a maintenance supervisor to maintain, to lead, to keep our grounds, to mulch and to actually help with some of the preventative maintenance across our four buildings. That was a position that was requested that is not in this particular budget. Health educators, so Mary Ellen Duggan spoke about the wellness policy. Currently, we have a distributed wellness curriculum where everyone has a little bit of a piece of the, the health curriculum from our PE teachers to our classroom teachers. We think it's really important to have health educators teach health curriculum in our, in our schools. And we do have that model at the middle school. This would provide two point O health educators shared between our four schools to make that a reality. Our ELD educators do an outstanding job, but we are seeing an increase to of our students who need services in terms of L services. It's not necessarily an increased number of students. It's also what the students are requiring, depending on what level they are. And if they're a level one student, they, they require an intensity and need and support that is people intensive, staffing intensive, and this is to help meet that demand. In the fiscal year twenty three budget, we did include a team chairperson, a person to orchestrate the team process to work with families, to educate families about the team process, to work with our special education staff so we can take the paperwork off of their plate so they can focus on students. Because we saw an increase in enrollment, we held off on filling that position and we focused on making sure our class sizes were in our, within our class size policy. So that position did not get filled in FY twenty three budget and it is, it was requested again, but again, it is not included in the preliminary budget of eleven point zero one percent. And we have a request for educator support professionals, specifically new positions to support some of our preschool. Students will be moving up into kindergarten and who are in our castle program. And then we have a request for a point two FTE assistive physical education teacher. So that person works very closely with some of our students to make sure that they have the assistive technology they need to be successful and have access to curriculum and learning. So again, this represents fifteen point two eight FTE positions. Total cost of a little over one million dollars. This would be increment, this would be another four percent increase to that eleven percent increase, so fifteen percent increase. That would be added if we were to have included these positions in the budget that was presented earlier.
And then another thing that we, we recommended was technology increase, is that, so that's not even on that too?
No, we did have some conversations with the technology department. And given what we're asking for and, and what the principals and directors were prioritizing, it didn't rise to the level of, of this list of fifteen people. But yes, that is true. That was something that, that was a budget priority of the committee and something the committee discussed.
So just looking at this list, right now, when students need extra help with math, is that just not happening?
No, I mean, I think it does happen. I think that our teachers provide intervention to students. We work very closely with our ESPs to provide intervention. But it's not as systematic and as well developed as our literacy interventions are. We think there is a need for, the math intervention is to do parallel work. Our reading teachers are doing at this point in time. But when students need interventions, we are doing our best to provide those interventions with the resources that we have.
And I'll just add that in Northborough, one of the primary uses of our Title I funding is math intervention. So that's, you know, a subset of students, but right now we have, we've done it with different models and different years. But this year, we have two people, one is working at Melican, Beasley and Lincoln Street. And then there's another person who's working at Proctor and Z. The person across three schools is, is full time when you add up all the hours and the other person is part time. And that is all Title I funded and all focusing on math. So that is another source of intervention, but as Greg said, it's still not as robust of a intervention program as our, our reading intervention.
Okay. And then just looking down the list, I know we talked about before the maintenance supervisor and the possibility of the town taking that over as Southborough DPW maintains their school grounds. That was something the town did not agree to, correct?
No, we've had some very preliminary initial conversations. I think one of the, you know, one of the challenges is that our, the town DPW, from my understanding, is, is struggling with staffing as well. And, and it was, we'd love to entertain that conversation. Also, we're struggling with staffing and filling positions that we have. So, you know, those are conversations we, we will continue to have and, and not off the table by any means.
So looking at this list, is there one or two or three that could be a priority?
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously adding fifteen FTEs to the current budget also has incremental costs of healthcare benefits, which is not included in the school budget, which gets applied to the town budget we have to consider. I think as a leadership team in Northborough, those are the conversations we need to have. You know, what are the, the top three positions or the, you know, what will have the most impact on what students experience in the classroom? And start making some decisions and winnowing this list to a few positions.
Question, Kelly?
Yes.
Could you go back to that one? Thank you. I think it would be helpful, especially as we get the questions onto the budget. Yeah, some of the things that you mentioned, like some of these positions, these aren't all new positions that we've been asking for. This is not the first year for them. So you mentioned like some of those positions were deferred from a year ago, two years ago. I think it would be helpful to know if you can somehow, I don't know how to do it, but if you put after it in parentheses, deferreds.
Since how long, how long have we been wanting this?
Because I could see some people in the public, you know, or even myself saying, oh my gosh, in one year they want all these? We have been asking for those. Those have been taken out of the budget. I mean, it's just that, what you talked about was just the history part, which I think is very helpful.
Yeah, but I think that also, you know, edu- educationally sound and fiscally responsible, that slogan. You know, we, we want to be educationally sound. We want to provide our students with the resources and supports and staffing they need to be successful. But there's also the fiscally responsibility that we have that we are the largest department in the town budget. And that there aren't endless resources, that there's a finite pool of resources the town has as well. And part of our responsibility is to try to work very closely with the town and understand the larger economic climate and answer the question, how can we meet some of these goals? And do both, have an educationally sound budget that is also fiscally responsible. And I just stayed in the obvious. What is included in this budget, and this is where there's some incremental growth areas, is some instructional materials. So there are some additional middle school science curriculum materials added in this budget that are needed. That's a ten thousand dollar increase. And we are also looking at our envisioned math K through five, doing some resource upgrades in those areas. A little over thirty one thousand dollars, our middle school math curriculum. So Dr. Reinhorn and the math leaders are looking at a math curriculum and are evaluating potentially new evidence-based curriculum materials, which is a requirement that we have based on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we are anticipating that to be an incremental increase of thirty thousand dollars. And then student and staff devices. One of the requirements that we have is to upgrade our student staff devices that, for example, the staff devices that we have, if they're, become outdated, many of our software programs, including MCAS, will not be able to function on these older devices. So this is maintaining our fleet so we can run the programs and provide what our students need in terms of instructional technology. So included in the budget is instructional materials at total a hundred and thirty nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Instructional materials that were requested that are not included in our budget. And this is a little, another, a little under a one percent increase if we were to add these. So strings, strings program instrumental lease and materials, so if we are launching a strings program, it is estimated that we would need an increase of seven thousand, five hundred dollars to launch the program. We are also, Megan Kelty alongside Dr. Reinhorn are engaged in an ELA curriculum review and potentially an adoption process. So the ELA K through five curriculum and professional development, we're anticipating that to be a significant increase of a hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has identified a few programs, two or three programs to select from that are evidence-based and have been vetted. So we're anticipating a cost of a little under two hundred thousand dollars. ST Math, K through five, which is a instructional mathematics tool, digital tool that we launched this year that was funded, funded through a state grant. That is no longer being funded through a state grant and districts are responsible for picking up that cost, that is twenty two thousand dollars. Math screening and diagnostic testing and then ELD kindergarten curriculum. So again, these instructional materials are not included in eleven point zero one percent and they total two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars.
Quick question. For the ELA K to five curriculum, you said DESI provides two to three to pick from. So you, you have to pick one of those and is there a timeframe where that has to be done? We have to meet that hundred and ninety thousand?
So what DESI has done in a lot of different areas is try to support school systems in identifying high quality instructional materials. And they use a national organization called EdReports. And then they use a Massachusetts-based tool run by DESI called Curate, which uses Massachusetts teachers. Anything that does well enough in Ed Reports can then get also a Curate review. And they use those two review processes as a way to try to help schools weed out. There are so many resources out there. So in elementary ELA, there are in fact more than two or three that meet kind of the high quality threshold. But when we, with our committee, have put them through a filter of what is aligned to our strategic priorities, our vision. You know, affordability. So there are a few that literally-
Are a million dollars.
Million dollars, like unbelievably expensive. We have narrowed it down to two or three. We don't have a timeline per se from DESI, but I would just say that the climate we're in with DESI is that it is a very high priority for them for all Massachusetts students to have high, high quality instructional materials in front of them. And they're now asking us to report on what materials we use. And they are making it a requirement for certain grants that if your materials aren't deemed high quality by these two rating, one of the two rating mechanisms, you aren't even eligible to apply for certain grants. So they're using a lot of different levers to really kind of put the pressure on districts to make sure that they're getting these high quality materials in front of students. And the research supports it. It's, it's, I think, a fantastic, they're putting a lot of ESAR money toward it. But it's expensive. And I, and I will say that our teachers, we've been doing work incrementally to head toward this. So the adoption of Project Read and Hegarty were both, or the updating of Project Read and the adoption of Hegarty were both steps that were taking us in this direction. And teachers are excited about looking at these materials in general. I mean, change is hard. But we had over thirty people apply to be on that review committee, which is, is pretty exciting.
So is the idea that if it does get purchased and adapted, it's going to be for the fall?
Yes.
It would be, so then it, when would it, like, how would teachers, they have to learn, I mean, teachers have to kind of know the stuff before they teach the stuff, you know?
Yeah, so the idea is the committee right now is reviewing materials. We have representatives from special ed, ELD, principals, teachers, kind of a well, well, a diverse group of educators. We will pilot some of the materials this year, during this school year with the goal of having made a decision in kind of late winter, early spring, like somewhere around March. And then we would hope to be able to create an implementation plan and look at when would we start professional development to support teachers in the adoption. Implementation plans can range, you know, like the school year is, is almost like this false, hard line sometimes. Like, it doesn't mean everyone has to like hit the ground running on day one with everything. It could be a phasing in of different components of an ELA program. There's lots of possibilities. The, the nice thing about an ELA curriculum is we're not, a lot of our ELA materials, and one of the reasons an ELA curriculum is so expensive is that it tends to have a high upfront cost to get all of the books and sort of classroom sets that support those resources that then are not, it, it would not be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year. But it's, but it's expensive upfront.
The hundred ninety thousand also, if I'm correct, includes some professional learning.
And this is an estimate based on some of the quotes we've gotten. But the good thing on the ELA side is we don't currently have like a license or something so that it allows for phased implementation if we want to, because it's not like we have to keep paying an old one while we start paying a new one. So, so we have some flexibility in how we think about doing it.
So that a hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and eighty would be today's prices, which means that we would probably, if that isn't implemented into this budget, it would probably be seen next year and that cost could be increased.
Yeah, I mean, some of them, yes, and some of them have given us quotes that they'll only guarantee.
For another month or-
For another month, because they've already, like, one of them gave us a quote and told us that they anticipated, I think it was like a fifteen percent increase in twenty three. So these quotes are even changing.
So with that change that came from the Department Head of the Education, this is also, could you, I can actually say that it's an unfunded mandate? Because they're making you go to some of the chosen programs that are research-based, which I can understand. But yet, they're not putting any money behind it. but yet they're not putting any money behind it to allow that. They're not giving any assistance financially?
Yes and no, I mean, I guess-
Over the regular budget?
Yes.
We could stay how we are, we just couldn't get any extra funding from grants and things like that.
I will say that they've made a very big effort to use ESER money in this way, the state ESER money. So that, so we have our our ESER money that went to every district. The state has a large bucket of ESER money. And a lot of the grants that they have created over the last couple of years have been related to instructional materials. Some of them we don't qualify for because we're not a high enough needs district, and particularly in literacy, there's been a, there's one particular literacy grant that a lot of districts are using to buy these materials, and our demographics don't qualify us for that grant. So yes, for for some of us, it's not funded. But they but they have tried to throw a lot of money at this, but not for everyone.
Okay, understood, thank you.
So if this is not moved into the budget, you will not be able to start this program in the fall?
Correct. And the, some of those, all of those things are currently happening, like ST math, the math diagnostic, and not the ELD.
Yeah, I mean, I think of of the rows, you know, the one that I'm most concerned about obviously is the big-ticket item of the ELA curriculum. The other line items, you know, we do have access to grants. And ST math, for example, we would probably fold that into a grant expenditure. But the hundred and ninety thousand dollars is not something that we anticipate we're going to grant fund our way out of in order to make it happen.
Final question. If we look at the regular budget line item, okay, that you have for ELA materials and that, could you say that we are making our inroads into buying, not this, but I mean, we are purchasing some things? Are we purchasing some things to go to that research-based?
Not, um-
Well, I would say yes, and this, I would, yes, in the sense that I think on the news and there's been a lot of, you know, communications around a sexist screening and, you know, what what is required in terms of, you know, phonetic instructions and phonemes. And Megan can talk about all of that, and you probably can too. We we have-
Asking where I'm asking a lot of questions.
All of those incremental steps to be, to get to high-quality instructional practice around, have, are being made.
And we have been doing that.
And we have been doing those?
This is nothing brand new.
This is, this is the next level of work that we need to do to truly be fully implemented in terms of what we think is high-quality instructional materials and practice for our students.
Because some of these are good practices, but we've also been doing them.
So some of them, some of them, yes, and I would say in terms of professional learning, the work that Megan has been doing with the DIBL screener, with Project REED, with Hegarty, with working with teachers on the science of reading, has moved us to the point of this being the next level of work. In terms of fiscally, those purchases don't offset this at all. Like, it's not, because that's what I was saying about, we don't currently pay-
It's in addition to.
This is in addition to.
Okay, and I would think the staff going for credits as they expand their repertoire and everything, and the newer teachers, they probably have some of this repertoire and they've, they're up to date with some of this new research-based learning. So we're, we're doing okay.
Yeah, the people, that's why I always said that having thirty people who are interested in this is is representative of what you're saying, which is people are, our teachers are saying, we're ready and want and need these materials. So yes, like, we're queued up well for being able to implement new materials. But it doesn't make it fiscally easier.
No, it doesn't, I agree.
So and then just historically, the appropriated budgets from FY eighteen through FY twenty three, you know, I think we've been fiscally responsible in terms of the budget increases that we've requested as a pre-K through A school district. But as you can see, comparing FY twenty three appropriated percent increase to FY twenty four, it is almost four times the amount. Where do we go from here, is the question? So I am an optimist. I think that it is early, that we have a lot of work to do in terms of negotiations. I think we need to finish that process. I think we need to continue to work with our Student Support Services team to look at getting a more clear picture of what that out-of-district cost will be. And also continuing legislative advocacy and getting that fourteen percent number to a percent increase that districts across the Commonwealth can afford. And then just looking at prioritizing, you know, what are those areas where we think are going to have the greatest impact to students in the classroom? Having conversations with the town around, you know, can can we fold in some of the maintenance and grounds work? What would that look like? The work that I see happening next is really at the district level, working with our principals, having some really hard conversations, thinking about what we want to accomplish with a budget, and then seeing where we are with a recommended budget in January. I would recommend that the Operational Budget Subcommittee meet more frequently in this fiscal climate than we have in the past so that we can keep you folks updated on what we're seeing, what we're learning, and what information we have as we move forward. I, although I am an optimist, I think that we are in a very different place this year in terms of preliminary budget and the budget drivers than we have been, I would say, in the past seven years. With that said, any other additional questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I'm still thinking, I'm still like reeling over this presentation. I can't believe that Becky has to look at these numbers every day. It's a very depressing outlook. But I I think my concern is being in that same position that we were this summer, where we realized we needed another classroom teacher. You know, luckily, we hadn't hired for the team chair positions, we were able to sort of use those funds for that classroom teacher. So I guess I sort of want to go back to those current class sizes. There's a lot of classes that are capped right now, looking at those projections, because right now there is no classroom teachers, from what I see anyways, in in this budget. So do you anticipate, or should we be anticipating an addition of a or maybe even two classroom teachers?
I think that in a perfect budget scenario, absolutely. But when we're left with making some really difficult choices, I think that, I think that we need to communicate that that is a potential. However, I don't think with eleven percent increase, we can factor what-if scenario, what if we have two additional teachers? I think what we can do is we can signal that, you know, like we saw last summer with the housing market and people wanting to move into Northborough, that there is the potential that we could go back to the town and say, you know, we have to hire two teachers to make sure that our class sizes are within the committee's policy. That would be my thinking at this current time.
And tagging on to what Lauren said, last month, he told us we had thirteen new students that came in.
Three.
No.
No, that was the last-
Last month.
It was a couple months ago.
It was thirteen, and now this this report is that we had three. So it seems like, you know, usually you would say, oh, everybody moves in, like you said, in the summer, in the spring, get the kids situated in school. We still see that we have move in, so I'm just tagging on to Lauren that says there's no new classroom teachers, but yet we're having, if you think about it, they're not in all one grade, but that's sixteen new students since school opened.
I would also share that this this budget, this preliminary budget includes those two teachers that we added.
So we kept them?
Yes, so we, so, yeah, so we've, we've, it's level services in terms of of what we have for staff now. It's an increase of two staff members from FY twenty three budget that we present, or one, because we didn't fill that, the team chair. It's a, it's a dilemma that we worry about. I mean, when we watched in Roman over the summer, it's something that we're, you know, we're sitting on pins and needles. And I think the best we can do in what has worked well is when we've needed to add those positions to accommodate class sizes. You know, I've had conversations with the chairs, and we've been able to make a work.
Kelly? So I feel like, like, the past several years, we've had really good conversations about, you know, being creative, about using the staff and educators we have and sort of, you know, rethinking their roles so that we're not necessarily adding FTE positions. And I think that we've done a really great job doing that overall. I think I'm having a hard time, you know, looking at the eleven percent and then looking at sort of like our wish list, which really, yeah, it might be a wish list, but I do think at least several of those positions are a definite need and not really a wish. So, you know, where you actually need more people, not just sort of like rebranding roles. So I think like, for me, that's my biggest, I guess, like, push or advocacy is to sort of creatively think about, well, how can we adjust that eleven percent to try to then make room for these additional positions? I I don't know what your plan is.
Becky's magic.
Becky does work magic, but eleven percent is-
I don't know how much more magic she can do, but-
It's a team effort, you know, it's everyone, like, looking at their lines and looking at their budgets and working together.
Is this something that, is this something that, I guess, has been communicated, like, beyond principals? So that teachers are having conversations, departments are having conversations sort of about these alarming numbers? Because I mean, if you look at, well, on my screen, you know, the past seven years, I think that educators or at least our associations, I think that information would be helpful in sort of like painting that landscape of just sort of what dire circumstances-
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, sorry.
It's part of the story that we're going to need to tell our teaching community as we go into the negotiation sessions around the appreciation of the work that they have done, are doing, will do, and the need for, the desire of the community to continue to grow the educational base.
It's a tricky balance, right?
That's all.
We want to, we want to show appreciation for our current educators. And part of that is through COLA, a part of that is also allowing that growth of adding more positions so that our current educators don't feel overworked and burnt out. So it is a tricky balance. I don't know if I have, I don't have a solution, but I think I'm just talking out loud here.
That it is, it's exactly that a balance, because we also don't want to be alarmists. We also don't want to paint this picture where although it appears the sky is falling and it's going to be very difficult, I think this is a budget process and this is December seventh. There's a lot more information that we need before we start communicating more specific impacts. I think we can signal where we are today and give facts around, this is where we are, this is what we know. We're going to be optimistic, but, you know, this is, we're at eleven point zero one percent. So I think that's the job that that we'll work with principals, directors, and have those internal conversations. We will have conversations with our our educators, but in a way that doesn't create a sense of grave concern, because that's not healthy. The last thing I'll share is that as as much as there are always areas for growth and improvement, you know, and we want to add positions, we are also well, in comparison, it's all relative, we are also well-resourced, that I believe that even in the most challenging budget times, that there are always opportunities for growth and improvement that don't cost a dollar. And we will be continuing to work on that and have that be a priority for us. You know, looking at our work systematically, making sure that we're providing our educators with professional learning and the environment that they need to thrive is something that doesn't always cost money, but is important to help us move forward.
One last request. I know that in our packet, you had the materials we're supporting, and I was following along with my laptop here, along with the presentation here. I noticed that there were a couple, one or two slides that were added and some numbers varied, that changed a little bit. Could we have a new one? Could you send us a link to the new one? Because I think it's very important, especially, and I'd like to thank everybody in the administration, from the teachers, principals, from the staff that's here tonight, all of you, because this is one, this has to be one of the most detailed ones that we have ever, that I have ever seen. And I think it's good to see what the staffing requests are, to see the things that aren't in the budget, because it is telling us, as we say, the whole picture, that type of thing. But I think this is going to help us to be better school community members as we go forward in this budget season until we get to town meeting in April, and hopefully the budget will, you know, does get approved. We have the support of the town, we have the chairman here with us tonight, Mitch Cohen. So I think you can hear our concerns, and he can take that information back to his selectmen and also to John. But I hope that you see how important this is to us, and I think that you really do, and it's very detailed. I don't think there's anything left out, you know, maybe an extra room of paper that you might want. But I would like to have just the next-
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think the the thing that I would like to do too for the next presentations, when we do all of our work in the Subcommittee and things like that, is when you get that number down, which I know you ultimately will because you always do, to see what's, what, what we're losing. Is essentially what it is, because you're going to get the number down to six percent. So what what are we not getting? And I think that's an important thing to kind of show, not that the sky is falling, but that it is, you know, something, so. Are you all set?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. School committee member reports, I will start and, Bryce, do you have anything? Erin?
Just the wellness committees meeting again next week. And we're going to split off into three subcommittees. One will be policy, one is to look at the data from the screener, and one is to kick off a wellness week.
I have one from the Northborough Ed Foundation between now and winter break, December nineteenth. Parents and anyone in the community can send a warm wish to teachers or administrators for this holiday season. All they have to do is send in a donation to NEF. And what the warm wishes will go to the teachers is a free beverage of their choice for the recipient, which is a courtesy of Arrow Coffee Roasters. So any donation that is made for the warm wishes, a hundred percent of it goes to the Ed Foundation and thanks to Arrow Coffee Roasters providing the free beverage. So this can go to classroom teachers, assistants, specialists, librarians, office staff, nurses, special educators, administration at the superintendent's office, and anyone that supports the schools, thank you.
School committee members, no, no, I'm just kidding. I can buy you one. Doesn't say school committee.
No, I'll take that to the next committee meeting.
That would be bribery, we do not accept those.
Okay.
Thank you so much, though, for your consideration. I would, I have kind of a twofold thing. For NSPAC, they have this next Friday, December sixteenth at ten thirty at Saylovee in Northborough, they're having a coffee and connection for the holidays. It's kind of like a great type of thing. And then on Tuesday, December twentieth at nine thirty at the Northborough Library, they're going to have their general meeting, monthly meeting, and their board elections. So that will be happening. So Bryce and I are co-leasans for the NSPAC, and they do their monthly board meetings with central office team and stuff, and this are scheduling- And this, our scheduling, we haven't been able to attend them.
Yeah.
As, as hard as it is, um, I don't know if any of us can really do it or not. But I don't know if anybody else has availability and wants to step into the role. I feel bad, I mean, they, the team is amazing and they sent us, as I, I, I shared with you guys, their reports. But it is such a great experience to be at the, the meetings and see firsthand of the things that are happening.
Kelly, the meetings alternate between ver- virtual and in-person?
Yes, so, yep, they alternate between virtual and in-person and um, so if anyone has.
Are they always on Tuesdays?
They're, no, they're Thursdays.
With some Wednesdays, mostly Thursdays.
Mostly Thursdays.
At what time? Is there a set time?
Eleven o'clock.
When's the next one?
Next week. Fifteenth, right? The fifteenth.
The fifteenth.
I think so, yeah, let me just.
In person?
Yeah, that one's in person, the last one was virtual.
Unfortunately, I have kids in the preschool until twelve, so even if it's virtual, I can't get out of the, um, the Thursdays, isn't I? The Mondays are every other Fridays I'm available, but.
I think I can do the fifteenth, if that helps, I could go do that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's something, as I said, it, it's something to, for the, I, I just, it is such a great, um, you know.
I can do, I can go to the one on the fifteenth.
Okay, so we can share the information with you, so you can.
Is that okay?
If you.
I can do, I can do that one.
Okay, I'll be sending out a reminder.
And where do we meet?
At central office.
Central office.
Yeah, in the, the meeting room, you know, the conference room.
And then we have financial.
Trend meeting.
That night.
Yeah, it's a busy day for you, Joan.
See what happens when you're, mm, retired? Okay, I'll help out for that one.
Okay, um, the other thing, um.
Thank you, Marie.
Yeah, thank you so much, Joan. Thank you. Um, the other thing is, um, the PTO's, um, the superintendent advisory meeting was canceled this month. Um, but it, of course, it was on a Friday that I could attend. Next month I can't, but, um, so that one is canceled if anyone is tuning in for that. I think that was all on my thing. Moving on to education policy, none at this time. Um, policy development and distribution, none at this time, personnel items.
So in your packet is the personnel report, we have, um, I think one of the most challenging areas for new hires is ESPs. So we were fortunate to hire some ESPs to join our faculty and staff, which has been very helpful. But it, sometimes it appears that once we hire one, one's leaving, so. I think the job market is such that many of our ESPs can, can find other work and make more money. And I think we've had several situations, Marie, where that's been the case, so. Heather and Marie and the team are trying to do the best they can to fill those positions, and they had some success this past month. Uh, but there remain a few positions that are, uh, open.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, communication, none at this time. Um, action on minutes. I did happen to, since we had the minutes right here, I did happen to look, it was the tennis resurfacing that I was talking about.
Tennis.
And it was updated into the new thing, so, um, I know the minutes are taken and then they'll probably look at it. But if they happen to, don't have somebody go search for that information.
I've crossed it off my list.
Cross it off, done. Um, but I will entertain a motion for accepting those minutes of the open meeting minutes of November first.
I'll move to accept the open meeting minutes of November first, twenty twenty-two.
Moved by Lauren, second, seconded by Erin. Any discussion? All in favor, unanimous? Um, and I will entertain a motion for the executive session minutes.
I'll move, I'll move to vote and retain the executive session minutes of November first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Uh, moved by Lauren, seconded by Erin, any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Unanimous? All right, moving on, future agenda items. We're gonna come up with a schedule for the teaching and learning presentation. SEL screening, MCAS presentation, the PTO presentation, did they come up with whose?
Not yet.
Okay, do you think it's gonna be January or we're gonna February?
I'm gonna target February, March, April.
Okay, perfect. And then, um, Erin and I are working on collaboration for the, the list for what we're gonna ask from the PTOs. So, we'll have that to, to, Joan?
And for future agenda items, um, the NEF would like to make a small presentation in March before they, they gain their grant award.
Yes. We, we talked about that before, I think we were talking about having it at, um, the combined, I think? Is that what we're gonna, because the NEF does.
The high school?
High school.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we'll add it to the.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any agenda items? Uh, approval of bills and payroll is up to date online. Final, our audience sharing. Any audience sharing we have? No, we're all good, all right. At this time, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. Joan?
Uh, I move that we, um, go into executive session with no intent to return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to collective, collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intent to return to open session.
Open meeting, say, twice. Motion by Joan? Seconded by Erin. Any discussion, you know, it's a roll call vote, uh, Bryce?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We are adjourning to executive session at eight thirty-seven. Less than two, thank you.